Well, we're all here, we'll put it in the dark. Would you like to pledge allegiance to the flag?
I would to listen to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes, we have motion.
So.
Motion and a second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Do the bills next.
To the ladies, yes.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Two, one of those is for a knife river for the truck route. Soapers for gravel and county line.
Any other discussions, questions? Go call.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Lypot?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Financial reports.
We're doing well, we collected quite a few dollars. And back taxes. To check on this.
Okay.
For.
Yeah.
There's a few accounts that we have to transfer money. And I'll do that for next meeting.
Okay.
Would you approve the financials?
You have a motion to approve the financials, second?
Second.
Second. Go call.
Lypot?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Turn your checks. You have a motion, do you have a second?
Aye.
No discussion? Go call.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Lypot?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Approval of the agenda and the additions?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, second?
Second.
Second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Ramsey County 4-H. Glad to see all these happy faces. Will Sarah take over?
Sure. Hi, I'm Sarah Lighty from NDSU Extension here in Ramsey County. I'm the 4-H contact and you can see we brought some of our 4-Hers along with us. I also wanted to let you know that we've got Maran Belikson from our office, Cindy Olson, and Bill Vodas. And it is 4-H week coming up next week. And we're going to have a bunch of different activities and we, the kids wanted to say a few things. Cindy and Maran wanted to say a few things and then after that, we are hoping that we can have our commission chair, Brown, sign our proclamation. And I believe the rest of you also have a copy of the proclamation so you can see it as well.
Okay, so as Sarah said, next week is 4-H week and we are going to be kicking it off with the annual 4-H pancake breakfast. And we would like to give each of you two tickets to join us at the breakfast if you so desire, we would love to have you as our guest.
Thank you. I knew there was something to this.
Free breakfast. And the kids are good for you.
It's called bribery.
And then later or next, after that where they're going to be giving water bottles out at some different sporting events and bookmarking all the elementary kids in Ramsey County.
We are also sponsoring and serving the tailgate meal at Lake Regent State College for the volleyball game on Wednesday, October 9th, and on Saturday, October 12th, we will be having a 4-H day at our local TSC. And we will have ready booths from 4-H clubs and that will wrap up 4-H week.
So, Casey Brown, would you mind serving?
Okay. Hi, I'm Casey Brown from the Royal Rowdies 4-H Club.
Hi, I'm Drew Brown from the Royal Rowdies 4-H Club.
Hi, I'm Lyndon Carlson from the Four League Friends 4-H Club.
I'm Bailey Hong from the Ramsey Riders 4-H Club. Ramsey County currently has nine 4-H clubs within approximately 130 traditional members. There are about an additional 60 kids that participate in just shooting sports and aren't in traditional 4-H clubs. A traditional member is one that belongs to a club and attends traditional club meetings, therefore benefiting in traditional ways.
My name is Megan Hong from the Ramsey Riders 4-H Club.
Hi, my name is Egan Mighty from the Ramsey Riders 4-H Club.
Hi, my name is Talia Mighty from the
Royal Rowdies 4-H Club.
I'm Lauren Simon from the Royal Rowdies 4-H Club. Now, we would like to offer you a role as we thank you for supporting and celebrating the upcoming 4-H week.
So we have some goodies for you guys.
Egg, eggs, and donuts.
I get no better than that.
Well, I think I speak for all of us when I say we're glad to have you here.
And we were hoping if we could get a photo with our county commissioners, with our 4-Hers here, would that be okay? I'll give you the proclamation. Would you mind signing that for us?
Are we done presenting?
The kids are.
Okay, well, do we, do we want to motion to sign the proclamation?
Oh.
What do we do?
I would bet we sign the proclamation and make next week 4-H week in Ramsey County.
Thank you, Alan.
I'm a second. Perfect.
Sounds good.
Now we're official.
Oh, official, official, thank you.
Now I can go on the paper.
Motion and a second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Very good. You want the picture now?
What?
You'd be good for you better.
Send their kids to school.
Send their mothers home, they don't want them at school.
We're in the right place, we're in the right direction.
We want us to stay here.
Be right there. Still need. Want to do it.
I'm not here nearly as important. Oh, this one's nearly perfect now. Put down the donut.
This is a good picture.
Are you moving?
Christine, you can't have the back through the door.
You have to zoom out.
Turn the 4-H bottle of water around here.
I can't get it with this one.
Yeah, I think I got everybody.
No, I got it.
Good. What a great organization.
I'm an obvious guest here.
Thanks for the number, guys. Oh, yeah, you better take a donut first.
Hey, thank you. Now my lips are getting me breathing.
This is the last one.
You're not expecting us there, you know.
Who's bringing donuts next time?
Mr. Brown, again, on our budget for this year, this is the new person here, if you haven't met her, it would be Helen, Maran Belikson. She was the addition of the 4-H. And we are very, very glad and proud to have her.
Good.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Well?
Stacy, sorry you got balled out.
That's a tough one. No, that was awfully nice, it looks like.
Very good, very good.
We stay, we're still pretty busy, next week I have, our fall conference starts Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And expect to be a lot of questions and issues typically. The first day of our conference is a VA panel will be there and I'm pretty sure that aside from what questions I have, they're going to be, the rest of the states can have some of the same problems we're seeing with typically the eyeglasses and VA travel pay and those kind of things. So I expect a big week next week down in Fargo. Other than that, things are going difficult.
Were we able to come to some kind of resolution with respect to that glasses?
The glass frame is out of my hands, I'm no longer the eye doctor anymore. And they're trying to get, I think there's the congressional pressure on the VA to fix what was created by a change all across the state. I've been in contact with Hoben's office in Fargo and they're leaning on the VA to fix what was the problem, so.
Oh, and hope that goes through?
Yes. But other than that, that's, I, that's all that.
Okay. Some questions for Stacy? Thank you.
Come on, please, Stacy.
Is she here, Luann here?
Kevin?
All right. Our project updates, the gravel in Ramsey County, Nelson County line itself is done. And we paid the employees the bill with all the other bills. Paper patches still haven't been done yet, but it's been ran in, so their whole schedule's out there now. Slip lane on that cover in three years, all done except for the grouting on the insides, so at least we got to finish that yet. And the Church's Ferry Bridge, we found out that the inspection might be late October or early November. So hopefully this will all end.
Oh, it might, good, it's not bad.
Any questions on those? Okay, both contractors were chips that we tied, remember? The quotes were exactly the same. They both agreed to supply half of the chips. Both contractors, half the chips at the same voyage price, so that's just a head rub more than anything.
Enough foot going, huh?
Nope. And the engineering firm that's inspecting the bridges and Church's Ferry? It's the easiest for them to lump some, lump some costs instead of splitting out the hours for each bridge. And after I looked at it, there's only like 20 hours that's going to make a difference, so it sounded logical to me too, so. That agreement that they sent for us, the motion to sign the agreement with Benson Company, is that that way that works?
A motion to do the class sharing split. The one for Ramsey and the other was in terms of Benson?
We need a motion now, I told them.
I go ahead and make that motion.
Hey, we have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
What was the estimate again?
$10,000 for our bridge.
Billion and $10,000, $30,000 total, so they're thinking it's going to be pretty close to equal time then.
Yeah, exactly.
The road is in pretty good shape to the bridge on both sides, is that correct?
Yep. And they're using the bridge for light traffic, I think, it's just we don't know what the condition is.
Right. Hey, we have a motion and a second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then the motor grader specs, if I can have a motion to put an add in the paper for bidding the motor grader. Who'd approve?
Right. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the motor grader add. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And one thing that maybe can't be had is that maintenance agreement that we sign every year from Benson Mark saying that we are taking care of all of our federally grows and all of our roads that are that we receive federal dollars on. It's something we do every year. Just need a motion to sign that.
Is that what came in the mail yesterday?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, I'll go grab that.
I'll make a motion to sign it.
Okay.
Also, any insurance?
Motion and a second on the signing of the federally agreement?
Carrie, do you need to?
I'll look, I'll just. That's the initial one right there, the bridge stuff.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
So, yeah.
Did you have that handy?
Yep.
I mean, motion and a second?
Yep.
That's all you have?
Yep.
Okay. You expect just two liters on the motor grader?
Yeah, at least, yep. Probably, probably, I don't know, it's going to end up in the disbarrio, yeah.
Is it the one that's due like by November 29th?
Yeah, we're way early on that.
Okay.
Okay. Luann?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, I.
I think we'll put you on right away.
Oh, well, that's awesome. Do I have to get up or can I just talk for me?
You're fine there.
Okay, well, the only reason I'm here today is I just want to find out if the county has any interest in working with me on animal control because there's nothing in writing for the county. And I've been doing this now, the rescue since 2011. And it's just kind of a little frustrating that there's no real organized way of dealing with animal control calls when people are concerned about situations that are outside the city limits. So I'm asking if anyone is interested in working with me to come up with actual animal control regulations for the county. There's 52 counties in the state of North Dakota and I would like to see S B 1 that has animal control regulations. That's about it. I haven't done a lot of work for the simple reason I want someone to do it with me that's going to be vested in this, so otherwise I won't waste my time.
Would that be something that would be coming out of the sheriff's department? That would be?
I would be to be working with the sheriff's department, yes, yes.
And currently are there any animal nuisance ordinances in place or?
Not for the county. There are individual communities that have come up with their own regulations. But no, there's nothing countywide.
And what are the majority of the calls that you get, does it stray dogs?
The majority of calls that I get are either abandoned animals or, yeah, people that aren't taking care of their animals, so the animals are at large and they're biting or barking. They're a concern to people. One of the reasons I'm here is because of how, you know, I heard the S word the other day and I know as soon as we have conditions where there's snow and freezing temperatures, you have no idea. I mean, I'm already really overwhelmed, we have about 80 animals in the rescue right now that we're taking care of. Dogs and cats. And that's before the snow hit. So I'm really trying to prepare for what's going to happen when it gets cold. We're trying to adopt out, transfer, and move animals the best we can. But, but no, most of the calls honestly are for animals that have been abandoned or they're not being taken care of. And, you know, law enforcement, I don't want to say anything bad about law enforcement because I think they do the best they can. But it shouldn't always be, there should be some way of them dealing with it where it's not that one officer says one thing and then somebody else says something completely different. You know, people in the community talk and there's sometimes a lot of negative things that are repeated that I would like to see law enforcement and myself be viewed as advocates in helping to deal with the situation more so than, well, deal with it, you know. If I have to come back, I'll just, I'll just shoot it or whatever. I hate to think that people say stuff like that, but it's been said, let's just be real about it.
So you have 80 animals, how are you funded?
By donations completely.
By donations completely.
We have gotten, the last two years, we have gotten $2,000 from the Devils Lake Community Fund. That is the only funding that we've gotten that's been from a city, county, state, whatever, organization.
And when you can't adopt out the animals that you've rescued, do you, are they euthanized then?
No, they are not, I take care of them for life.
Okay.
I have, I have what I call my basketball team.
Yep.
Which is five dogs from the reservation from three different situations and those dogs will likely live out their life with me. That's my basketball team. No, we take it very seriously, taking care of the animals, so.
Well, hats off, I mean, that's a commendable endeavor that you've taken on now.
Yeah.
Well, Luann connected me with my dog. My dog came out of the rescue, so I think that this is important and when Luann reached out to me, I suggested that she come in because I think it's at least worth having a conversation about what some sorts of common sense action we can take.
Yeah, do you ever, any knowledge on how other counties set this up or cities?
I can get that.
Yeah.
I can sure get that for you. Like I said, I didn't waste a lot of time because I don't have the time.
Right.
And I want someone involved from this, this board that's going to be, you know, interested in it and help me with it. I'm kind of burned out on doing something for nothing all the time because everything, everything I do with the rescue is volunteer on my part. I don't get paid for anything that I do with the rescue and I'm happy to do it. But it would be nice to have people's support and cooperation along the way, so.
The city, do they have, what do they have in mind?
The city has the animal control officer and the city has their own regulations. But again, anything out of the city, it's it's up to the county to deal with it. It's not the city's problem.
Right, and I understand that.
I get reminded of it all the time. Huh?
We'll get reminded of that.
Yeah, just like I do.
Well, there's, there's a lot of drop offs, you know, in the country.
Absolutely, that is one of the most, I would say 75% of the calls and messages I get are that a dog has showed up or a cat has showed up. Absolutely, that is, that's number one, the call is quite great, so.
We should, you know, get some knowledge on other, how other counties are doing it. Benson, I don't imagine has a.
Benson has nothing in effect either, so. The thing is Benson could model themselves after Ramsey if they wanted to with whatever we come up with, you know. I grew up in Benson County, so.
There's a number of city ordinances across the state, I did a little search last night, not, I mean, not a substantial amount of time. I didn't see any county ones. Cass County has something under their home rule. State law allows it to be looked at as a nuisance in certain situations and then if there's an animal that's biting people, then there's another mechanism under state law to deal with that. Oftentimes it does come down to the nuisance statute and the complaints that I've had have been, we had one where there was a dog that had bitten someone. Dealt with that statutorily under what we're allowed to do. No further problems that I was made, we're up on that particular scenario. The other issue is from time to time, somebody will call if a dog is running and attacking livestock. And then there are definitely, there is authority to put those types of animals down if it has become an issue. And then most recently, a call about somebody who felt that a neighbor's dog was defecating in their yard. My understanding is in that particular location, there's multiple dogs that are running around, so we can prove it was just that specific person, animal doing it. But there is the nuisance statutes that can be utilized. But for county ordinances, I don't know if there is very many in the state, I'd have to look, so.
Yeah, is it even allowed?
Well, it comes under the public health and safety and welfare and all of that, just like the alcohol ordinance, so it does. But it would be interesting to see, number one, how many calls you're dealing with from the county versus the city and then what everybody else has in place.
I can go back and I can give you data if you need that.
Sure.
Absolutely. What I was going to say is that right now what happens is if anyone contacts me, I always have to basically remind them that because there are no county regulations, we need to follow what the state's animal control or animal, you know, laws are and sometimes that's okay, but, you know, it's, at a minimum, that needs to be followed, at a minimum. So. I just thought it was worth looking at because and I thought it would be nice for Ramsey County to have something in writing because it's real frustrating for me. You know, I get contacted and then, I'll give you a perfect example. You know, I'm not always comfortable going places that I have no idea who this is.
Sure.
And has a woman by myself, I, you know, I don't carry a handgun or anything like that per protection. It would be nice for me to be able to call the sheriff's department and for it to be taken seriously that I've gotten this complaint, can an officer please go with me? Well, it's not really, I feel like I have to beg to have some help, you know, and I think I've earned my stripes in this community, I've been doing this since 2011. So it would be nice to be able to call authorities and to have it be recognized that oh yeah, Luann's the one that helps with these situations and, you know, she's an ally for us. This is good that she's taking care of this. Not that, oh god, that pain in the ass again, you know? I mean, so. I'm just sharing a little bit of my frustration with you and just being very honest.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I'm sure it gets frustrating at times, you know. Like I said, there are lots of drop offs and
Yeah.
I feel a lot about the country.
We're fortunate to have as many good decent people that live here locally as we do have, so.
Well, we'll try to come, try to come up with some type of policy and look at other counties, city ordinances, and see what best fits us.
Who can be my contact person as far as providing information to?
I would be happy to continue to act in that role.
Okay, okay.
And as far as this is concerned, I don't think it's a bad idea, you know, with Luann, having done all of this work on this, maybe we keep her in the loop.
Well, absolutely, yeah.
Not just, not just what we chose to do, but what we're thinking about, you know.
Yeah, we got somebody more willing to tell us to.
Absolutely, I care about this community, so.
Well, and since you're on the front lines, you only fit on a daily basis, you know, nobody's going to know whatsoever to you. So, you know, maybe Lucas and maybe Carrie with the legal aspects, making sure that we, if we draft an ordinance that it's gives all the requirements that it needs to do, and maybe one hurt to involve the sheriff's department, if they're the one.
Well, we're going to work, yeah, we're going to get them involved, you know. Luann, you live in the country, go tell them where.
No, well, no, it's interesting you ask that because where I live, that's a loaded phrase. I rent a property that's two doors down from the Davis Motel which is where I've lived for, I've lived there since December 6th of 2010. However, I don't really stay there all the time because it's an old, old, old house in need of very significant repair. And so I have my basketball team there, three cats that will also not ever be adopted, that are by default mine. And I take in dogs and have them warded there as well. But then. But, um, then, I don't live here, but downtown, we rent a space right next to the Happy Hippie Shop that's called The Caddy Shack Downtown. And all of the cats from the rescue, pretty much, with the exception of maybe four, are fostered there. We do take some dogs there occasionally, but the thing is the space wasn't meant to have dogs in it, so I have to be really careful about that. Like I'll have puppies there or really mellow dogs occasionally, but it wasn't, it wasn't rented with the idea that it was gonna be cats and dogs. We have a church right next door, so we have to always kinda be aware of the noise thing for when they have services and meetings. But yeah, that's a space that we rent also. And we did that for the simple reason, the little fish house that's on my property that I rent, that kinda couldn't accommodate the cats in the rescue anymore.
Right.
If you ever drive by, you'll see what my facilities are. I have a fish house and I have a dog house that is a garden shed. That's what I have for facilities.
Well, we'll look into this and, uh, like Lucas can be involved there and...
Yeah.
Contact me or whatever.
Yep.
We're gonna get the sheriff's department involved here.
Okay.
I want it best suited for the county.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll try to come up with some type of plan.
Okay, that sounds really good, Ed.
Thank you for your time.
Am I dismissed now? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll move into the, uh, Mr. Kell conference call.
Thank you for using North Dakota Telephone Company Conference Service. Please enter your conference identification number. The administrator has not yet arrived. Before the administrator, please enter your administrative test phone now.
Can you count that?
I just have the attendee number.
Uh, nine, zero, four, two, one.
I didn't hear that.
The conference administrator has joined the conference. There are four attendees on the conference call.
Okay. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Um, I think, uh, the first order of business would be to, uh, elect a chairman, um, and does anybody wanna nominate somebody for chairman?
Who's current chairman?
Uh, this, just joint, uh, for this day, only a lot of, joint, the chairman of the, of the health...
Hey, Mike's apart.
It's Mike's up there.
Eddie County, Eddie County? No. Oh.
I was probably gonna roll call and see if everybody's on line.
Okay, well, let's see if...
You might, you might wanna come closer or something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. Make sure everybody's here first.
Okay, let's, let's have a roll call first, see who is all, uh, uh, here. Eddie County, are you, uh, everybody there?
Eddie County's here.
Okay, how about Pierce?
Here.
Okay, how about Benson?
Here.
Okay, Ramsey's here, so there we go. Uh, so we were, uh, talking about election of chairman, does anybody wanna nominate somebody for chairman of the joint, uh, board of county commissioners?
All nominated, Brown.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, uh, are you, all in favor of Ed Brown?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Ed, it's your meeting.
Hey. Roll call, they're all here, okay, we got that. Minutes, is there minutes to approve? Okay, we need approval of minutes, any corrections? Do you entertain a motion?
Pierce County moved to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
We got a second here in Ramsey. Is no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, County. Are you, everybody in approval of the minutes? Eddie, are you in approval of the minutes? Eddie County, are you there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you're approval. Benson, are you approving the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Pierce?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into the budget, twenty twenty budget.
Does anybody have any questions?
Is there any questions from the other counties?
Unless I get here.
Nothing in Eddie or Benson?
No.
No.
Okay, okay. Now we look for an approval on the twenty twenty budget.
Council, Luann, Eddie County.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second, Mike Chris, Mr. Chris County.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, well, she'd have a roll call vote. Eddie County, you go first.
Luann, yes.
Neil Root, yes. Dave Gertz, yes.
Benson County, you're next.
Yes.
I'm standing, yes.
George Griffin, yes.
Not a yes.
Mike Shannon, yes.
Dave Davidson, yes.
Thank you. Pierce County?
Mike Chris, yes.
Mike Rose, yes.
Jerry Harper, yes.
I'm too married, yes.
Dave Baker, yes.
Ramsey County? Go ahead, roll call.
Mark Olson, yes.
Jeffrey, yes.
Lucas Wakefield, yes.
Adam Leipon, yes.
Ed Brown, yes. Everybody unanimous on that? Uh, any other business? No other business from the other counties?
What do you hear?
Got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. We got a second?
Second.
We got a second here in that Ramsey with Adam. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Video board, so we can see what we got.
Yep, yep.
Video board.
Thank you.
Yeah, you gotta wait till nine thirty on that fine budget, let's go through the new business then. The, uh, state chair delegates appointment. Try to take care of that.
Who are the last here?
Yeah.
Yeah. You want to go again?
Sure.
Nominate Jeffrey? Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, nominate Jeffrey for, uh, state chair delegates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Northern Plains Resource Conservation Development Council.
We'll make the motion, we, uh, we got our membership fee, three hundred dollars, is it?
That's right. Okay, we got a motion for the, we up our membership fee. We have a second.
Second.
We have a third second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, some appraisal values and hearing date.
There's a possibility that this list will change yet today, they have until five o'clock today to come in.
Okay.
And pay, so, this is, this was as of five o'clock yesterday. So hopefully we have...
Hopefully there's not that, yeah?
Yep, and hopefully there's more money in the mail and...
So this is, this is moving back to X?
Yep.
So.
Yep. But like I said, they have, they have until five o'clock today yet, so.
Okay, well, we should, should roll form over, next meeting then? They will, Luann?
No, you can, I mean, you can approve it, you can prove it as is and whatever comes in after today.
Yeah.
And I can just take those properties off.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep.
When, when would we like to have the hearing for?
Um, it's usually done at the second meeting.
Okay, six, six o'clock or what?
Um, five forty-five.
Okay, all may motion to approve the list and to allow candy to take anyone off the case, Dan, and set the hearing for five thirty-five, second meeting, okay? Second.
Okay, motion and second. Set the date and hearing time.
October fifteenth.
Do we have all that?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Review letter from our court of transportation. What is it about?
Well, it's just, just the two different terror blocks, you know, the transportation alternatives and then the, uh, railroad crosses. Do we have any crossings that we're concerned to vote or we're, could never get that one done out next to, which is great.
The one that, Kevin, because that shop there?
Yeah, that's it.
That one's not...
No one, any active, that was, what, last year? Just don't think we ever got a follow-up, it's completely finished or...
It's very much appreciated out there and all that.
We haven't had anybody bring up any other areas that were, that were really, be a concern that we might be interested in.
It's the next most traveled one.
Yeah, good question, maybe, maybe the one by Bartlett, I don't know.
That's a tough one.
Old one, yeah.
One north of the rest area. Yeah, the traffic goes through there.
Pretty like cruise kind of thing.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's a tough one.
The one over the rest area? Well, that's, it's got, yeah, it's got the curve to the east and then there's kind of a grove of trees there and...
Kind of a hill to the west.
There's a hill and...
The west side, that's...
That's a pretty well traveled road.
A lot of people that are crossing.
They're all...
There's a lot of people coming from the rock road, just along the ortho.
That's why I usually, I usually...
To get onto two, Ramsey two.
Otherwise you have to skip back to the west of mine, take that road over, down the curve.
I think there's been an increased issue with all the traffic on two out here and all the construction. I mean, people are going to the hospital, winning, they will cross, they're coming from the south, they go across and go up and through and narrow. We should put a project in, each state, give a good idea of that one in. You know, there are trains all the time, I mean, there's a lot.
Yeah, there or, or Bartlett, you, I mean, that's a county road too, so, I mean, it would make sense to at least look at it.
The Bartlett one?
Yeah. What, there? I think we could look to either one, but we're, I suppose he comes to everything on it.
Yeah, they don't quarter it.
They don't quarter it?
Well, obviously Lakota one day, a couple of years ago, when Ray Miller came in, he lives north of the crossing. And he was just white, he was white as a paper. He's red, I think, what's wrong? Come across that crossing, just missed a train. And I wonder how many times the flight, he just came across there.
That Bartlett one?
It's, it's the guy, then he didn't talk for a long, because I gotta go home. I was really upset.
Well, it's, it's the common problem, but if you drive it every day, you gotta just get used to, you haven't seen a train for the last hundred times, you, you know, you just kinda space out or... That railroad crossing was bad for a long time until we got arms there too, because you couldn't see anything coming from the west with the, with the, coming from the north with the elevator sitting there, boy, there was close calls and that, maybe kind of...
Many times. Yeah, we should get our application in.
For the Bartlett one? We'll do.
Yeah, probably start there since it's a county road would be my inclination and then we could work our way back.
Maybe we get some help from Nelson, also a dual county.
Right.
We'd get more consideration, huh?
Check into that too, well, not even sure what they gotta do to qualify, but I think they, well, traffic counts are probably one. The site distances from the, are probably another issue.
Traffic counts are gonna be a problem there, there are not many people in the north of there. Should we, can we put in for two?
We could try, yeah. Well, we could put in for two.
Are we letting Nelson put that in and support them for that? And then put the one in up north of the rest area? And support that ourselves? Probably dual support with Nelson on that one.
Yeah, I'll do some.
Yeah, we've got some time to get it together, it's ninety till the end of the year or so.
That'd be a good idea to put a vote in. Cause I know that one at Grand Harbor, Holy Smokes, the people are so appreciative of that one.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable. I mean, people comment to me all the time about that. Very good deal, yeah. The rock road, that must be, uh, north of the rest area, must be a bus route down.
I'm sure, yeah, with gas, yeah, there's, right, yeah. Sure. I was knowing that road, it's...
Yeah, I'm sure it's a bus route.
There's probably a traffic on that one.
Yeah, like I said, I, I jumped that road right there to get south of the rock road lots of time, well, 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 cross somebody coming the other way.
Yeah, the road.
I know since the south end of the rock road got paved, that is a lot of traffic on that road.
Yeah.
Oh, way to, yeah.
One of the things on that paper patch, as I was gonna mention, that bridge?
Oh.
Do something about a whole lot of...
So, that's right.
Yeah, it's pretty gone. South side isn't so bad, but that north side, pretty gone.
I'll just keep it there.
Yeah, it, I don't...
Just gotta keep, just...
Maybe you give up or something, I don't know.
Yeah, it wasn't, it's gonna be a hole, but something's going on there.
Yeah, it's gotten there. Seems like something's going, about as bad as it was now, I feel. Earlier, it was something. Anything else to talk about there?
Remember filling up, thanks, we're around the valley underneath, so, I'm gonna miss that.
Yeah, the south side, but this is going on on the north side now.
It's sloughing off and back into, back in the above it or...
I don't know, yeah, it's trying to, it's sloughing, but it was definitely going somewhere, so it was packing itself back in or...
Yeah, it was, I mean, it's, it had dropped like it flipped on the south side. Yeah. And the insul was coming down into the jammer, running through the one slope in water, so I mean, it's, I'm not gonna stay forever that way. Well, I mean, it's just natural over time, it's kinda, yeah, it's kinda, it's kinda it's kinda sloped a little bit, kinda lay down, I mean, just kinda...
On the north side, when we filled it, it was only like three or four, maybe four inches deep, you know, it wasn't, it only stuck a rod in there and poked around, it wasn't like deeper than that.
It wasn't.
No.
Nope.
Well, it's a good sign, maybe it's starting to get burnt up, probably, it just needs to be filled up properly so it hopefully will stay that way then.
Yeah, and the amount of traffic on that road is, is a lot. Anything else on this? Just have to get it in by the end of the year?
Yeah.
Civil asset forfeiture, you know, like you're in.
So civil asset forfeiture is, I don't know how familiar people are with the process, but what it is is, um, the civil takings of items that were either acquired from the sale of illegal controlled substances or utilized in the sale of controlled substances. So for example, um, if there is an arrest, maybe somebody has a substantial quantity of narcotics and contained within wherever they've got that located, they say there's a safe and it's full of narcotics and then twenty thousand in cash. We do a civil action, seize that money and then bring a civil action in district court to have that money forfeited back to law enforcement agencies to continue on with various investigations of drug-related offenses and things. various investigations of drug-related offenses and things of that nature. And that's been going on forever. We have the Lake Region Narcotics Task Force here that primarily is the agency that's doing the civil asset forfeitures. Once we go through the civil process in court, then there's been traditionally a cost share where the county got a particular percentage, the agency got a particular percentage, and the percentage that came to the county, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, has traditionally gone into the general fund. So there's no way of tracking where those proceeds go and things of that nature. The legislative, legislative session this time around set up kind of more stringent requirements and reporting requirements on those monies that are being seized and how they're being distributed. In light of that, counties can either set up a civil asset forfeiture board, or if they choose to not do so, any funds or items collected then revert back to the attorney general's office. So, what we're looking for, what I'm looking for is a policy from this commission to utilize the ability to have a county asset forfeiture fund. It would be just a, a sub-board, three members at the most, need the sheriff, the state's attorney, and the auditor would be on it to take ownership over that percentage that comes back to the county and then basically law enforcement agencies could request a portion of those funds to be distributed for investigative purposes or other law enforcement purposes related to drug offenses. Two types of boards that are kinda coming around that I've been watching in the state's attorneys. List serve is one where there is just every single application that is made to the board to spend the money has to get approved by a simple majority of the whole commission or other ones are, the commission is saying to the board, you have the authority to approve up to a specific dollar amount, anything over that then has to come back to the commission. So, just looking for general thoughts on what type of a board you would like to see established here. I think it's important that we retain that money that comes in and that it's utilized by our law enforcement agencies. Wanting to know a little bit what everybody's thoughts are, I guess, as it relates to that. If you'd be comfortable, I know Williams County has it, I think the dollar cap is twenty-five hundred dollars, so anything twenty-five hundred or below, the board can approve those applications, anything over then comes to the commission.
What, what kind of?
So for example, see, we.
Annual, are we looking at dollar amounts again, yeah?
No, because it's all, it's not really been tracked, it's just gone to the general fund. So for example, I just signed up on stipulations to settle civil forfeiture in the county. The total dollar amount is about eleven thousand dollars, twenty percent of that would come to the county, so I'm thinking ten grand, twenty grand at the most here. Another thing that will happen is they'll seize a, a vehicle and sell it on bids, and then the proceeds from that will come to the fund and the cost share. And then the agencies can request, maybe they want some overtime hours for a specific investigation they're doing, or maybe they need some equipment or thing of that nature, or the prosecution of those offenses as well, could be looked at as dollars that could be utilized.
Is there, if, if part of this law change, is there like, now that they're essentially asking us to track it, is it because there's gonna be a reported requirement?
There is.
Cause they wanna know what's going on with it essentially?
Yep, my office will submit an annual report to the attorney general's office and then I presume they will share those stats with the next session, because there was some concern that items were being seized, money was being seized, that really didn't have the correct correlation to the, to what was going on in the criminal offenses.
Yeah, and that's what I was recalling from the discussion last legislative session is they, they felt that there was abuse and how they were, they were essentially asking for forfeiture on things that were, shouldn't have probably been forfeited so that they could have a general fund basically.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I guess it's tough to seven dollar figure, but you, we're kinda shooting in the dark, I guess.
Forty-five hundred is what Williams County.
That's what Williams County is doing, uh, early county is doing that and then they have a, a cap on the total amount that can be expended in any given year. So, in the bigger counties, the cap is thirty grand.
Thirty grand? Which is a lot of real estate.
No, and I, and I don't suspect that our expenditures are in there, that our forfeiture is even totaled out. So there's a handful of them, so the one instance that I'm thinking about, law enforcement did a search of a residence and in the safe there was a pound or so of marijuana and then next to it was thousands of dollars in cash, so. Another one was where they thought somebody had been transporting narcotics up from another state and so they seized the vehicle. So, there's not very many of them.
And up until now, it's been?
So it's been twenty percent has been going into the general fund.
And then?
And it's not tracked.
And the rest of it goes back to the?
It's a cost sharing between the agencies, so the task force gets a specific percentage, the actual arresting agency gets a specific percentage, within twenty percent was going to the county. And that, I presume, was set up before my tenure with, whoever created the task force.
Yeah, and it sounds like a good idea.
So then I will present, um, a, a policy and board creation to the commission at the next meeting, then with that cost, kind of a breakout.
Sounds like a very good.
Yeah.
Should've just left his barn out of it. He been doing it, right, pretty much?
No.
No, it's twenty percent has been going to the general fund.
Twenty.
If there's just been no.
Eighty, they didn't go back, they didn't like though.
No, eighty, the eighty stays local, a portion goes to the task force and a portion goes to the arresting agency. I think Benson County was using their twenty percent instead of putting it in the general fund, I think it was going to the state's earnings budget, but don't hold me on that. Jim will tell me if I'm wrong.
Carry on, curiosity, the, uh, the bus that you're referring to with the marijuana in the safe, it wasn't here in downtown, was it?
That was in the city of Dallas Lake.
Pretty sure I gave the go ahead of that door, you take that.
Hey, sounds good, you come up with a plan?
Well, then I will have it sort of both out in the packets for the next meeting.
Hey, office furniture, you got a plan on that?
Oh, I, office furniture. So, um, we're struggling with, um, trying to find places to put everybody and work efficiently and deal with, um, the quantity of people that are coming in and out under the Marcy's law and then having a spot for those victims to be able to meet with us and have updates on their cases, as well as then defense attorneys coming in and law enforcement officers coming in. A while ago, we had looked at some furniture with Norby's, um, that looked at utilizing that vest system that Connie Jones had had and splitting it into a two-piece system. Norby's came back with, um, a dollar figure, thought they could maybe match the existing piece that was up there and then thought that maybe they wouldn't be able to match it close enough, so we had gotten a second opinion from the Canivers, which was formerly Yap, Yap, I believe in ground course. Got the person out here, got an initial drawing or rendition and could never get a quote from them or a callback, so. We went back to Norby's, Norby's provided us with the option of putting in a whole new system because they don't feel that they can properly utilize the one that's up there. And that is the quote that I believe went out of court furniture. Which would allow DeN and Kim to be in that front central space and then allowing that back portion where everybody comes in to utilize more for meetings with defense lawyers, meeting with law enforcement officers and then the victims of witnesses for the cases.
So this dollar figure is not, in addition to what we approved earlier, is basically a replace up?
Correct.
And what was the dollar figure?
I think it was around sixty-three hundred from before. And this one's eleven thousand something, but that, there's a couple of pieces on there that aren't necessary and I've asked her to readjust it, uh, like a dual monitor arm or something and then there's a.
Should we get it booked?
Keyboard, key?
Keyboard or?
Keyboard thing, we only need one, we already have one, there's no reason that can't be scooped down to a new system. So it should come down.
So probably put a thousand bucks off then maybe.
That's what we're hoping for, I've asked her for a new quote. Those prices that she sent there are good until October nineteenth and then they could go up.
Always can.
Won't go down?
Well, take out a piece of.
We're gonna play most now, what? You know this?
We have.
So do you, do you need a motion to approve allowing an repayment, I'd love to say ten thousand?
Well, I, I would go up to that, but no more than that.
Yeah, I mean, up to, but not to exceed.
Correct.
Not where you can keep going.
Get it ordered and get it put up so we can.
Well, then I might.
Or just approve it for this amount and then if it's less than that, then, then it's covered.
Okay, we'll do it that way. Motion to approve, uh.
Request from the, yes, state attorney's office that we're going. Second. Got a motion in a second? Any other discussion, questions? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
So will that front desk, like we talked about?
I will not fit back in my spot. It's, we have to knock on a wall. I have to get it in there, it's, the size of it is actually bigger than my office. So, and Martin, Martin is using Martin's personal furniture from her office for furniture. I mean, that is something that she brought in, she's utilizing that, I mean, my desk was a hundred and some dollar desk from the air place that was going on business or, it was moving or restructuring. So.
So, yeah.
As much as I'd like to be able to use that piece, it's just not going to fit through the door.
North side.
Yeah, north side, so. Maybe Roger can come up and tear off a piece and add something to get it to sit up on one end, but.
I've been told if you take out some cookies, you're just about to do anything.
Maybe base some brownies.
There is, I think brownies.
Since I'm yapping a little bit, uh, I just wanna tell everybody that we have now exceeded the numbers from the total of last year in every category. Mental health is up, juvenile is up, criminal is up, over the ending numbers from December thirty-first of last year.
And another quarter of the year to go.
Correct, and so if it continues like this and into next year, it may be time for me to have to come and ask for another person. Just something to have in the back of everybody's brain. Sheriff Nelson will probably come ask for another person here.
We're gonna have to have a serious discussion, I mean, at some point about how we're utilizing space, I mean, too, if we have to start adding people that we're already tied in there, where, where are we gonna put another person if he was using the space?
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of, um, potential issues to talk about if the numbers continue to rise.
We'll cross that then.
Um, well, and the other thing that happened too is with the changes in the law, now any certain types of assaults that take place within city limits, the city used to be able to prosecute them, they all now have to come to district court, so we don't quite, we know yet how that's gonna shake out.
It's gonna be more work.
It is gonna be more work, it's gonna be more work. And we did get approved for that grant again for next year for a portion of the one salary. I think that's thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand, so that's two years in a row that we've gotten that, that helps. And I'm happy to report that Candy and I managed to get everything off to these civil attorneys for the overall litigation, so I think everybody got a copy of that letter from that law firm.
I would think there's a way we could track the added expenses we're getting to, are circling into the district court from the city, right?
Yeah, we can track them by pieces that come in based on the arresting agency.
We could track that until the next budget cycle, I'd like to be able to have a little of the years.
Yes, um, it could be an Excel spreadsheet, you can keep track of it and bring it next year, this time, or whenever.
You asked, right?
Uh, no.
We got all the motions you need?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we're going to appoint two members to the zone board for social service. Adam, you wanna give a little?
I said some background, uh, we met again last week. We pretty much, I think, hammered out mostly what we need. Everybody's on a board, uh, we appointed Rhonda to be the interim director of the zone. Uh, and then, uh, once the zone goes live, January one, uh, then the zone board will meet and then we'll have to advertise for a full-time position at that point. We came to the conclusion, uh, between the four counties that being we have to get the zone live by January one and we have to have the plan approved by the state by December first, we didn't have a lot of time to, to advertise for a bunch of outside members and things of that nature for the board. So we came to the agreement that every county would have the, uh, ability to appoint, uh, like, I don't remember who's it, it could be, uh, it has to be, everybody gets two members, one has to be a commissioner, the other can be a commissioner. So as of now, I think basically what'll happen is every county will just appoint two commissioners so we can get the zone board live and then once the zone goes live in January, then we can make determinations if we wanna make the board any bigger, if we wanna have more people on that board at that point, but we just wanna be able, cause you have to have the names of the board members to the state for the approval of the plan to get the board to live. So we just basically just came to the conclusion, that's the quickest way to get it done and, and clean and everybody's gonna have equal representation, so, I mean, that's basically where we're at. Once we, uh, get names approved by all the commissions, different commissions, uh, I would assume most everybody's meeting today or this week, um, then, uh, plan's being drafted. There's still, um, some questions about determination of indirect costs and how they're gonna flow, but, uh, between the officers and, and Rhonda, they're gonna hammer that out and I think we'll be able to get that pretty well locked out. We're trying to get some direction from the state basically, because nobody really knows, they haven't given a lot of direction on that to this point, cause I think they're trying to figure out how to handle it, still feeling certain situations and so, we're standing at both of the points. Uh, so once that gets hammered out, uh, we're hoping to have a, uh, a draft of the, um, agreement to the commission for the second meeting of October to look at, to approve, so that we can get it sent off and, uh, they approve sometime in November, so we're ready to go live January twenty-first. But the only thing we have to do right now is appoint two.
Question, I?
I nominate Adam Leipon.
Well, it kinda makes sense to, to continue with the same ministries that we have on that social service board?
Yeah, well, I nominate Adam Leipon, Andy Brown, I just don't know what we're gonna do except for there is the same motion.
I think that'd be reasonable.
Same motion is fine.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I think it's going on quite well, uh, but you know, it's only the second one we've had with all that county there, so. It seemed to be very workable, you know, I think.
I think so, I, I think there's, there's gotta be more questions, I mean, it's, I know there's gonna be questions on how certain things are paid for and, and how certain things are handled, but, uh, you know, a lot of that I don't think is our problem, but it's getting directed from how things are gonna be reimbursed from the state and things like that, once we get some of those questions hammered out, then we'll be able to make some determinations, but, I mean, from the aspect of us working together locally, I'm, I feel pretty good about it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Two members for the, uh, zone board and the social service. All favor say aye?
Aye.
All oppose, motion carries. Yeah, I think those indirect costs are, you know, everybody, you're just kinda searching the closet how to do it, you know, because we haven't got any guidelines from the state how to do it. Imagine they're waiting for us to step on our toes and charge too much, you know?
Well, I think, like, when we said in the meeting last week too, I think part of it is that they're not, they haven't given a direct directive yet, because I think they probably are waiting to see how the counties are gonna handle it and shake it out themselves because they probably got nineteen different questions about how to handle it from all nineteen, well, maybe the zones that are standalone, cause they don't have to worry about what they had written, but anybody that's inaugurated, they're probably getting that question, how are we supposed to handle this and this and this and this and, uh, they're trying to get a, I mean, get a plan together, I think, uh, get directive to everybody, I mean, basically.
I think they're just going question by question.
I think so.
Figuring out this. Figuring out this.
This is, this is a big zone, I mean, there's only four zones bigger than this one, and that's four large cities, so.
Yeah, from, from usage and probably from, we're probably gonna be biggest by square size, I would guess, or close to it, maybe the southwest corner of the state to the western part of the state might be bigger, but. I mean, it's gonna be, functionally, I think it's gonna be, uh, interesting to see how, how we work from windshield time, everything else, but at the end of the day, this is the directive kind of that the state wants us to do, so we'll make it work, I guess, if we have to.
My thinking and being out there is, we're not getting a lot of directive from the state on how to set this up, you know, I mean, it's it's their money, I don't know if they're waiting for us to step on our toes and, like I said, charge too much for this, or, or, I, I don't know. Unless they don't know either, I, I'm not quite sure, what do you think, Adam?
I, I'd like to be part of it.
There's nowhere to go.
Well, I mean, they gave us, they gave us like a, a general, here's what we're looking for document, but it's, I don't think it's really, yeah, it's not directive really, it's just like, well, this is who's gonna be on the board, and this is the counties together, and this is how we're gonna split costs. I mean, uh, from, I think they're basically make, waiting for us to make a local determination, and, and I don't have a problem with that, but they need to give us at least the basis of how you're gonna charge for this, how you're gonna charge for this, so we know. Uh, in, in the meeting last week, we did talk about, you know, and I guess, from, from my aspect, and I think I agree, is that from Ramsey County's perspective as the host county, there's, there's really no benefit to us charging the other, uh, counties more indirect costs than we incur. But the thing is, at this point, we don't really know exactly how much indirect costs we're gonna incur through the auditor's office and everything like that. So we at least have to have enough to cover our time and our effort and everything else, but at the same point, we don't need more than, you know.
Right.
Anyway, because we, you know, wanna be for the other counties, and, I mean, in all honesty, a majority of the indirect cost really comes down to keeping lights on and building rent and state's attorney's costs, and, you know, that's where most of the indirect costs are wrapped up, not in the auditor and the treasures, because like, like Candy pointed out in the meeting, once we get everybody set up insurance-wise, and we get everybody set up payroll-wise, after that, it's probably not gonna be too bad, but that initial flushing, kidding everybody set up is going to be a real pain to a point, but it's nothing we can handle, but it's just, it's gonna be, you know, a lot of stuff happening at once, so.
Time consuming.
Yeah, it's gonna be, so December's gonna be a, a busy month trying to add a bunch of people and get them, once we get approved, get everything wrapped up, but.
I think it's gonna work, it's gonna work, I feel like Candy seems to be very, very agreeable, I think, and very good to work with.
I think so.
Doing things in a very professional way, I think, so. Well, there's much more to report on that, I don't think, is there?
I think that's right.
We'll keep you in the loop, I guess.
I think we still need to take a vote.
We have an ad hoc vote, yeah?
Oh gee.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, motion carries. We have a vote, don't we?
Yeah, we did.
No, there's a motion.
I'm losing my mind.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Thank you. I apologize to, sorry. Oh, it's one, we, we have to wait till nine thirty on that final budget period? Let's report on portfolio. Mark?
Uh, the LAC, uh, the security system's up and running. I think they got most of their glitches out, from what I understand. We still haven't gotten a report of the items that they fixed that they weren't supposed to fix, and we don't have a list of things that we still will probably have to go back and fix. Uh, it's not a long list, I know that, but there's, it's, that building's a wire nightmare from the top to bottom, left to right. Um, we got our new, uh, handicap doors in, everything like it there, that's all done. And that's about all that's going on there. Sheriff's Department, one of the deputies resigned, so Steve is currently looking for a new deputy. And that's about all that's going on there, but again, everything's pretty quiet.
Dave, go.
Well, as Carrie mentioned, her numbers are, are way up, I don't think we need to discuss anymore there. Paula unfortunately left with the chamber, um, chambers had a busy summer, spring, fall activities and events throughout the community, and they continue to do so, they'll have their annual meeting, leave us the twenty-third of October. At the college, eleven thirty, you know, twenty-third of October, um, will be their annual board meeting. Serve a lunch, and they have a keynote speaker, and then they generally change hands as far as, uh, chairman is concerned for the, uh, chamber meeting and their chamber board, and then, uh, they have their chamber, chamber member of the year, your award. I think they're still taking nominations for that. Extension, you saw how busy they are with, uh, N four H and extension, and, uh, and we're working with Bill. The Dells Lake Joint Board was always a, a funding partner with that small tile project request of, uh, fridges on Highway seventeen, and they're gonna put some gypsum in there to, uh, enhance that soil, there were some of the soil issues they've had in that area, so we continue to cast on that and hopefully get some positive results, so. We can cast those onto consumers that they're not putting in, you know, eight hundred, a thousand dollar an acre tile on something that's not gonna work for them. So it's been a pretty worth, worthwhile, uh, project, uh, they have a bigger one that Bill's gonna work on, getting us some more information on that, both Ramsey County Water and Dells Lake Joint Board, I helped find up at the Langton Research Center with Nahimi Kalwar, and, uh, he's gonna get us some information on how that project's been going on. Different soil types and the benefits of tiling and, and the effects of it, done by quality and soil enhancements and, and different things like that, but. Should be exciting to get that gypsum and, and that, that piece of property of West Fridges on seventeen, see how that affects, affects things, you know? The gypsum itself isn't overly expensive, it's just the cost of getting it here, and usually experiment.
They got it from way out west someplace, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's Bueller or something like that, that, uh, you're bringing it in from, um, but somebody was gonna be making some trips out there and offering to do it and, for a, a small fee, and helped with the county's laws, so they're gonna do that, and I think there's a few different organizations that helped, uh, with the funding on that, uh, see if through its completion. But, uh, yeah, other than that, been wet. I mean, you know, September is probably the, within the top ten, if not the top five of the wettest Septembers on record. Um, nineteen forty-one, they had over nine inches recorded, but, uh, we're sitting at over five for September. So certainly we'd be within the top five of our wettest Septembers. And certainly, we wettest within the last, you know, twenty-five years of our, our flooding situation. You know, and that, that always scares me, is that we're going to fall freeze over saturated soils and, and, uh, it, it just kind of emphasizes the reason that you, and make hay while the sun shines with the operation of the outlets. Uh, the outlets were, uh, throttled back considerably this year. And, uh, you know, partly because of, you know, we were going through a dry period of time, and they didn't see the emergency to operate them like that. And now the Cheyenne's too cold for them to operate at all, they've been out for about, uh, a week and a half now. Since they got all that raining down in eastern North Dakota, and, and we've got it around here as well, so.
Hardly do much of Cheyenne's running though.
Yeah.
They're running as much now as we got that one.
Yeah.
That's running, the crazy bore.
Yeah, I, I, I think probably more, when we monitor those, uh, gauges above the hills, like, um, open on the west side by Flora, and that's as high as I've ever seen in the springs even, um, you know, it was over, uh, over two hundred CFS for a while there, and that's a lot of water coming through that little.
Alright, it's, you know, how wet it is all over.
Well, you got five, five inches of rain at this time of the year is different than five inches of rain in June too. Because five inches of rain in June, you've got actively growing vegetation sucking up water, and now it's, a lot of the crops are pretty much dead or closed to death, they're just not holding anymore.
Yeah.
It goes.
Yeah.
Soil profile's different.
And I know some of those areas around that, um, southwestern Benson County, you know, they got more rain than they had all year in about a forty-eight hour time period.
Crazy.
So, yeah, the, the Cheyenne's running good. So I, I would assume that those outlets would remain off probably till the end of next week. Uh, and whether or not the Cheyenne is available to operate at that time, we'll see, but, they remain off for now.
Well, we're lucky to have them in place, to yous.
Yeah.
Lucas?
I don't have a whole lot to report, other than, uh, North Central Planning, uh, we reviewed their, uh, their report on their year of progress, and, uh, business starts are up. Things were looking pretty decent as far as their, their numbers were concerned. Uh, no other issues there, and, and I really don't have anything else.
Okay, Adam?
Well, we talked about social services, uh, from the standpoint of, uh, the zone, uh, just regular social services work, everything is going along pretty well from the, uh, standpoint right now. Uh, foster care caseload is kinda crazy, but other than that, everything's going pretty well. County Housing Authority, nothing too crazy going on, um. We've been asked to help, uh, uh, manage, uh, the payday program up in Willa County, so we've been helping out there because they, their board is, uh, they, they're transitioning from public housing to like a voucher system, so we're gonna help kinda administer that, because they're kind of going regionalized through HUD, so that's kinda it was, it was one of those, uh, would you like to do it, you're going to do it type of situation, so, so we're helping out. For Dells Lake, I have that tomorrow, uh, I know, uh, in the email Brad mentioned that they were going to be approving the first few students on, uh, share going to that twenty twenty program, mesh up with businesses, so that's a good deal. Uh, I think we're up to maybe two or three now, we're gonna be approving, so that's good. I don't think there's anything else. Not that I can think of.
Dave? Yes, oh, that seems like law enforcement center meeting, right? Yeah. Just, we've come to some conclusions on the budget out there anyway, so, but we can move forward with our own, so. It took a little prodding, but, um, I guess I would say that the counties were kind of upset with the city. I mean, kind of, but it might be mild, but. Pretty upset, so, uh, they didn't like the way the city was doing business as far as being part of the law enforcement center board, and and, uh, one of their members wasn't there that day, and, but we did come to some conclusions. So the rest of the counties can move forward with our budget, and hopefully they can move forward with theirs, but, for twenty twenty, so. I, uh, it went quite well, I guess, to me. And like Mark reported, reported on the building and everything, and Burschon's been very good to work with, I think it was kinda their people they were working with, giving them some problems, but I think, I guess they were pretty good at the end, and so we hope the new system benefits law enforcement real much, we hope it will, so, I think it, I'm pretty sure it will. I know it was very expensive, and I thanked the other counties for their help and that. Thanked them more than once, so. Can be very beneficial for the law enforcement there, so. Rob's been, last week in Oklahoma, uh,
Yeah.
schooling, the people put the schooling on big for, for they caught law enforcement, anything. So he was down there for a week, and I haven't talked to him on how it went with him, but, uh, I will do that.
Association of Counties just came out with a news release yesterday about, uh, enhanced nine one one.
I heard it on the radios, yeah. There's some money available?
One point four million dollars for the state of North Dakota, so. Um, I'm sure Star was aware of it, but I sent her the news release anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, you know, hopefully we can catch ourselves to some of that.
That'd be a good deal.
Yep, you know, um, and I didn't read the entire thing of, of what it was, but it sounded like, uh, better mapping and, and call placements for a nine one one system, so, anytime we can enhance those features without rushing the taxpayers a bunch of money.
I should probably go as emergency manager too.
He did.
And so there's free money out there, we better get everybody's fingers in the box, eh?
So, so it, it, it's designed for, uh, public information operations, and, so it included both Chris and Star on that communication and just to make them aware of it and how they're going to apply it for it.
Federal aid, huh?
Yeah.
When is the, uh, when is the deadline, have like the sirens type stuff in place and, and what? Well, there really isn't no deadline, but the state is really pushing, but, um, there's a number of counties in the state that are dragging their feet because of the clock. I think it's three hundred and sixty per year, isn't it, Mark?
Yeah, I think three seventy, I think.
A little ago, I mean, it's just a very expensive project, and, and we're in no position out there to try, try to tackle that right now.
Yeah, no, that, that's kinda where my question was, I know, obviously, we just came up with kind of a tough budget cycle.
Right.
Oh, now we're gonna have to try to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna do that, and and then that's not even talking about the fact that we're still gonna have a bunch of radios from the county perspective, and there's a caution on that.
Right.
But we're gonna pay anything over that baseline cost, so, a lot of stuff going on with that this next year, I'm sure.
And their director of state radio retired now, so. That's gotta be limbo on who's gonna be in that position, and be interesting to see how they steer state radio from there, see how they go, you know, I guess. But I know, I think I've said this before, when James Town, Stutzman County was there, and Grand Forks County was there, and their people at the law enforcement center meeting, they both said that they were going with the sirens and the state radio system. They were gonna maintain their own and stay with that, so. So they had no interest in going that route, and that kinda shocked me, I thought, you know, but.
I, I wonder if some of them aren't taking that wait and see attitude of, of seeing if there's any gonna be any state funding passed down.
Yeah.
With, with, you know, there's some, some, but not enough.
Not anymore, a year ago. Very, very minimal, what, what they were doing, and I, I think that they want to get this project off the ground, they're gonna have to legislate, they're gonna have to put some money into this.
Right.
But it's a huge undertaking for the counties to take it on. You know, when they're not happy with what's there now.
Right.
You know, we just. Counties don't want, they're, they don't see the use of state radio, you know? They like their own systems, and everybody locally knows what's going on, dispatchers know what's happening in their own system, so. But. Well, we're, we're a couple more minutes. Anything else, Dad? Good, good to see the four H people and all that.
Well, I'll throw a few announcements out there.
Okay, go ahead.
They all don't pertain to anything here, but. Peasants Forever is coming up on, uh, Saturday night, they usually have a big crowd, a lot of people. Shooting sports people are there, it's a, it's a good thing to show up to if you're not doing anything, if it's raining, and you can't come by. Also, Association of Counties is always looking for door prizes for their convention. I got a couple, but, you know, just throwing that out there, if anybody's got any ideas really you can snark a door prize. The ladies really appreciate that. And then Frightening is coming up on the twenty eighth, ninth of October, if you know any nonprofit organizations that are looking to make some money. It's a very good way to do it. Four H is coming back this year, thank God, so. They took a year off, and they're coming back. So that's all I have. Any others, though?
How many kids usually go for a frightening? A lot, I'm guessing?
Two, a ten?
Yeah.
About five hundred plus. It's unbelievable.
That's a lot of kids.
It's a lot of kids.
It's a lot of Andy.
In, in two and a half hours, that's a lot of kids.
That's good, though, it, it's a, it's a good place for you to go, it's safe, it's
Yeah.
It's a good setup. That's good, though. It's a, it's a good place for you to go, it's safe, it's a good setup.
Yeah, they have, they have supper. I mean, tacos in a bag, there's free cake, there's free bounce houses, there's free games, there's free bags, there's a lot of, there's a lot of free stuff, but, you know, the games are worth. They walk out, they walk out of there with a apple bound a can for, for a dollar, basically.
Plus the free.
I know the Heritage Center is gonna be doing their Halloween, uh, stuff again this year. You know, having, uh, different games and activities set up, and then also, uh, we're gonna do the ghost tours again this year, which are a lot of fun, actually. Um, you know, we've got a whole, there was a book written at one time about all of the alleged hauntings, uh, in Devil's Lake, and so we walk around downtown and point out all of the, uh, morbid and vivid details of those people's lives, and it's, it's a good time.
Any other announcements? Okay, let's move into the twenty-twenty final budget hearing. Any questions? I guess we've got all the information we need. I think you've done a good job considering, thank Kevin and Candy, and anybody that helped with it.
Well, because the county doesn't be pleased with us, seeing as, uh, nobody's got, we've got a full house here.
Percentage increase for public area notice, point one by four one percent. Very good, Candy.
Big part of it's Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good work for the highway. Okay.
And thank you Commissioner Lighton for having.
Absolutely.
The idea in the first place.
Yeah, absolutely.
I had an idea, Candy came up with it. I just rolled with it. It sounded like a good idea to me.
Yeah, it was a good idea.
Well, but thank you for championing it, and thank you for your, uh, intelligence on the matter, Kevin.
Thank them for the, yeah, the intelligence, they're in Ohio. Didn't know all the avenues of that federal aid, you know, you borrow ahead and stuff like that. Hopefully the very, uh, money, the box bill up, so I'm pretty sure they will, so.
Yeah, we're kind of in a, in a good situation where, you know, this, this wouldn't be something that wouldn't necessarily be available to us without that statement, Kevin.
That's right.
I mean, it's kind of a one-off, but it's, it's a good setup for us, so.
Gives a good option to do that. Any other comments? I know we talked about health insurance. I don't know if you're gonna do anything with it. Maybe just kicking a ball down the road, but.
I, I think it'd be good to have that discussion come, you know, later on. You know, maybe after the first two years, and then you start off with the department heads or something like that, and see if they have any, you know, help, suggestions, recommendations as we do go down the road. Again, you know, right now, I think it's a little late in the game to, to change things up, but I think that certainly if we could take a look at it for next, next year's budget session, or, or see if there's something that we can, uh,
Yeah.
and do without penalizing our employees.
Yeah, I, I know it's difficult to, you know, use your words of penalizing employees, but, I mean, I'm not in favor of doing anything now, no I'm not. Bring it up in the coming year, yes, but to be fair to our taxpayers, um, it's hard to throw more taxes at farm economy, I know that.
I think it's just good to start the discussion now, because it's gonna be a, it's gonna be an extended discussion on how we should handle it, and I think it has to be more than just, we're gonna do this next year. It's gonna have to be a multi-year phase-in type of thing on how we're gonna handle it. Uh, the one thing that we have in front of us is, uh, the numbers that Candy was able to get for changing to a five hundred deductible and a thousand deductible versus the two fifty we're on right now on our plan, and if you look at the, look at the, uh, the, uh, the suggested funding levels, where basically we have to cover the difference off the stop loss, I mean, it's within like seventy dollars. It's pretty much moving the deductibles isn't too much at all in terms of our savings. I mean, it'll save us a little bit, but really not much. So, we're gonna have to come up with a plan, and the, the thing with it is, is if I remember correctly, the numbers don't roll up my head perfectly, but projected, if we eat it to our fund, uh, for next year, we're still going to be sitting at something like seventeen percent carryover on costs. So if we're at seventeen percent over, that's still pretty, we're still, we still have a question. We can do it next year, have a discussion about it, come up with a plan that we can phase in over multiple years, and then, but I, I think sooner rather than later, we should restart the discussion, so we can figure out what we need to do. Like you said, it's pretty quick here, we're at the first two years, so we have our plan in place when we get into the next budget table, so that can just be plugged in. But for next year, I think, I'm fine with staying where we're at, but let's, we gotta, we gotta come up with it.
I think that's a good route to go through, is the department heads, and you can get feedback from new people, and give us some direction on how to do this, so.
Well, it's gonna take time to run the numbers, and figure out what, what we need to do to make it work.
Do we need a motion to approve the twenty-two budget?
I have a few more questions.
Go ahead.
If I may.
Sure.
Um, um, just, I need to know what direction you guys wanna go with, um, you know, the city always putting a letter request for recycling, you know. Even, even though I put in, you know, I put there ten thousand, but is that what you wanna pay them? Or do you wanna go with the five thousand?
I thought, I thought.
Did we, did we change that?
We dropped that to five, and then we moved the five thousand we saved over to the homeless shelter.
Yeah.
To the safe.
Safe. No, not safe, the homeless shelter.
Well, the community shelter.
The community shelter, yes. The shelter, I think we moved that from ten to fifteen, because they were asking for a little bit more, so they did some part-time help.
Okay.
We did that back in the fall, I guess, council is, is, I think, I, I think I'm, I'm fine with staying with the five thousand dollars.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then, safe, you're, you're fine with, um, I think we always, we just always paid them, they always got like five thousand, you know, for the year, and then they would always come back and ask for more funding, and now they're just wanting like a thousand dollars a month, or twelve thousand dollars. And I have that in here already, but just.
We put it in the original budget.
Yeah, yeah, but just, just to let you know that, I mean, to make you aware of it, that is, you know, those are the ones that I.
Well, I guess at, at the end of the day, if, if they, if we continually always gave them money after six months because the, the five isn't covered again, and we're comfortable with that, I think I'm, I would be fine with staying with the fault we put in there. I mean, it's, it's a, it's used, and it's needed, okay? I mean, it's, it's, it's cost us some money, but I think it's, it's money well spent in terms of keeping people, but if they, if their preferences were to be able to get people down, you say, you say it's something we have to.
That was just my two that I.
Catch your, excuse me, Mark?
Yep. I'm moved to approve the twenty-twenty budget.
Okay, we got motion to approve the twenty-twenty budget?
Second.
You have a second? Any other discussion or comments? Done? Your call.
Britt?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lighton?
Aye.
Ralph?
Aye.
Thanks for everybody's hard work and thought process. Took us a little while to get there, but that's all right. We got there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tito?
Thank you for taking care of the needs we need to take care of, so. Anything else on the agenda that we need to cover, that we're forgetting any, or bypassing any? It was good to four H came down, boy, I'm gonna compliment them on that, I mean, we're just, we're up there.
It's great to see them.
It is, isn't it?
It's a growing program, and it's, they're doing a great job recruiting with, with, uh, clubs and advisors and volunteers and.
They said they have a hundred and thirty additional members, and how many are chance sports?
Probably another sixty.
Yeah, that's what I said.
That's a lot of kids, man.
Yeah, yeah.
Couple hundred kids, active and for you, it's a good, you know.
You know, air rifle, truery, or, air rifle starts, I believe, in, in, uh, January, and then our truys in between that and shooting sports or shotgun, and then, uh, shotguns in the spring throughout the summer.
Uh-huh, yeah, they do. Lots of projects, good deal.
Yeah.
Thanks for taking the pictures, Louise.
Yeah, it would be great.
It was, they put newspapers out. Okay, with that, we're there. Thank you.
Thank you.